Amen. Now, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Well, we have a packed house today and this month we have been celebrating Black History Month. We've had a number, we have a number of activities. On Monday, we had a special press conference and hard hat tour of our new Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame that will be an international tourism attraction located on the Ohio banks and the largest equity project to date that the county has built. And so, we're very excited about that. Hard head tour was great and we also was, the committee also announced the induction of Louise Sharpshire, who will go in to the Black Music Walk of Fame and she is the original writer of "We Shall Overcome." So, we're very excited about that. And today, we have our Black History Honors and I want to recognize Commissioner Dumas, who, when she was elected, as the first African American elected to, to a county office. And yes. And she started this Black History Program and I want to thank her for that. And so, we will have the honors, honorees that we are going to recognize today. We also will have a Black Business Day, first time ever. One of the things I wanted to initiate as President. And so, we will have a Black Business Day on February 21st with a roundtable and then a presentation on what the county is doing. And we've got a special surprise on taking some action. So, we'll have that. And then, on February the 28th, we will be going to Lincoln Heights, one of the first African American cities in the country, in the state, and obviously, in our county. And we will be at 6:30 there, 6:30 PM, and it's open to everyone. And we'll be talking about the history of Lincoln Heights, the initiatives that we've done to work with Lincoln Heights and the grants and things we have, and also get an update on moving the gun range out of that proximity. So, that's our schedule. Before we get started though, I do have to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Okay. So, we're going to get started with the proclamations. Each of us have folks that we have recommended to be honored. And we're going to do them one by one. When we call you up, please go to the microphone and you'll be able to say a few words. Each of the commissioners will also have a chance to say a few words about each of our exciting, dynamic honorees. So, I will start first. The first honoree is Marcia Brodenax. Whereas, whereas the Hamilton County Commissioners recognize February's Black History Month, also known as African American History Month, and that this month be a time to better understand the contributions made by African Americans to the United States of America. And whereas, during the month of February, Hamilton County recognizes the contributions of African American citizens to the culture, well-being, economy, and vibrancy of our community. And whereas Marcia Brodenax was born in Panama, Republic of Panama, then she came to the United States in 1957. Later, she eventually got married to the Sidney D. Brodenax Jr., who has been the Most Worshipful Past Grant Master and is the Lieutenant Grand Commander of the United Supreme Council Northern District in America. He should, he should stand up. We've got national, international people here. There he is. There he is. Whereas Marcia Brodenax joined St. John's Chapter Number 25 in 1984, where she served as Worthy Matron in the year of 1992 with Brother Frederick Isaac as her worthy patron. Later, she was elected and has been serving since 2000 as Secretary of St. John's Chapter Number 25, who does a great deal of community service and work in our community. Whereas, eventually Marcia Brodenax retired in 20, in 2001, after serving 30-plus years from the University of Cincinnati as the Administrator, Secretary of the School of Design, Architect, Art, and Planning, known as DAP. That's when they do all of the creativity at the University of Cincinnati, and she was there for 30 years. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize and celebrate the contributions of Marcia Brodenax to foster an inclusive environment for growth and opportunity in our community. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County does hereby proclaim February 16th, 2023, as Marcia Brodenax Day in all of Hamilton County. So, I was gonna ask, you come to the podium and we will have each member, if they want to say something, and then we'll, you'll say something, then we'll come down and take a picture with you. Okay. Vice President Dumas, you'd like her to speak first?
Sure.
Okay, Mrs. Brodenax, she will speak first. Let's bring the mic down there. There you go.
I'd like to say to all my sisters, my family, my brothers, family, my friends, and all that are here, and to those who could not make it but are here in spirit, I want to thank you for this most beautiful day. And I do thank you and appreciate and love you. Let us continue to reach out with an open heart and a helping hand. Let the beauty of what you love be what you do. And that's my theme, love. Love one another and help one another. My wish for us is, in the words of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "In some not-too-distant tomorrow, the radiant star of love and brotherhood will shine over our great nation." With all the scintillating beauty, that is Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s statement. Wishing you blessings, good health, and all that is beautiful for the year 2023. And remember to see the sunsets, for they will warm your heart. And to the Board of, of the County Commissioners of Hamilton County, beautiful souls, recognize beautiful souls. Keep being genuine, for your people will find you.
Wow. Stay right there. Don't go, don't go away. Boy, that just warms my heart. And as you can see, is, I really wanted to honor you because you're never one that wants the attention. You're always honoring others. You're always helping others. And there's so many people that do that, that are, you know, you help so many youth. You were at UC when it wasn't diverse. And being a woman in that position at one of the top parts of the university, you know, DAP, you are a history maker. You're a history maker. And I wanted you to be recognized for everything that you do for everyone else.
Thank you.
Vice President Dumas.
Thank you, Madam President. I am recognizing Glenn McFarland.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. No, no, no. Are we gonna take, we gotta take her picture? Do you have anything to say?
Congratulations.
Okay.
Well, and let me just say, let me just say that you came from DAP. I mean, it's clear to me that you've got the soul and the spirit of an artist and somebody that is, a person that, that pays attention. You're sensitive to, to folks in this room. I, it's clear, your spirit is with us and really appreciate you being here.
It was a beautiful place to work. It's beautiful. DAP is just the number one in this United States.
Yes. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you so much. I've never officially met you before, but such a lovely lady. Is that not what life is about, to leave a legacy? And so, I've heard lots about you. You continue to do that and I thank you so much for this recognition.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And she packed the house out. We can tell we, everyone loves you. We're gonna come around, take a picture, and then we'll go to our next honoree. Right here. All right.
Right here, right, this way. Right, one more, one more, right here. Thank you.
I've got one more. And then, vice, turn it over to Vice President Dumas. Got one more. Got one more. Our next honoree is Dr. C. Keith Melvin. I won't read the first two "whereas's" because it's on all of ours. I'll get right to the meetup. Whereas, Dr. C. Keith Melvin, a native of Cincinnati, graduated from the greatest high school ever, Withrow High School. Hey, you know, what can I say? And Fisk University and the University College of Medicine. He has practiced emergency medicine, critical care, medicine, and general primary care for over 40 years. He was appointed a Fellow in the American Academy of Cardiology and is an assist, Assistant Clinical Professor of, of Medicine at the University of Cincinnati College of Medicine. Whereas, Dr. Melvin is a lecturer and motivational speaker and has spoken and presented in many local civic organizations and high schools around the city. He was selected as the National Grand Rounds Lecturer, where he lectured at hospitals and medical clinics in over 25 states for 20 years, for years. Whereas, Dr. Melvin is the President and CEO of Community Health Speaks and President of the Black and White Cancer Survivors Foundation. And we know that's huge. Over 1,000 people come to that down at the Duke Energy Center. Notably, Dr. Melvin led the Mercy Health Team with the first COVID testing site in the urban core of Cincinnati, where 5,000 tests were administered in Bond Hill. And that's before we were having testing sites. It was huge. Dr. Melvin has received many awards and honors, including the Health Champion Award, the Citation of Excellence Award, the Lifetime Achievement Award from closing the health gap. He was named the Business Courier's Healthcare Hero and many honors. Recently, he was named a Man of Honor by the Abercrombie Group, Pillar of the Community by the University of Cincinnati African American Alumni Association's Onyx and Ruby Program. He received the prestigious Daniel Drake Humanitarian Award from the Cincinnati Academy of Medicine. Lastly, he was presented the Gaskins Foundation Lifetime Achievement Award for a lifetime of teaching and mentoring young men and women emphasizing African American students in the health field. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize and celebrate the contributions of Dr. C. Keith Melvin to foster an inclusive environment for growth and opportunity in our community. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County does hereby proclaim February 17th, Day of February 2023, as Dr. C. Keith Melvin Day in all of Hamilton County.
You know, Alicia tricked me because she texted me and said, "The county is going to honor you." And then, she didn't say anything else. And then, she said, "Can you be down there Thursday at 12 o'clock?" Okay. So, when I got here and saw the likes of all of these folks, I was more than flabbergasted. And so, that I have to let you know that I am thankful to Marcia because it must be her following that has allowed all of these people to be here.
Her following and all your patience.
Yes. But in addition to be honored by the County Commissioners' Office is a tremendous distinctive honor for me. Yes, I've had many honors, but never by the county. And to be amongst the honorees that are here today, I know all of them. And Tyrone Yates and I started a long, long time ago because we were the teachers for upward bound program in 1976. I was in my first, second year of medical school and he was in his first, second year of law school. And now, here's where we have arrived. That's Black History in the making. My predecessors blazed many trails and left many paths. And so, to keep from reinventing the wheel, I have found that in my career, I have followed the path of those predecessors that were tremendous Black leaders, just in the field of medicine. And now that I am 70, almost 71 years old, I find Sister Dumas that I have blazed a trail and I am leaving a path for the younger doctors to come behind me. It is unfortunate that the work that we have done for decades and decades, I find that the circle is complete, but it keeps on going. It seems that the same things that my predecessors were fighting and battling, I have been fighting and battling. And I would say that unfortunately, the folks who followed me will continue in the same fight. The fact is, this whole thing is a journey. It is not a destination. And you do your time and then you move on forward. And hopefully, you blaze a trail that's worthwhile for others to follow. And I am here today amongst so many leaders, so many leaders in all of the communities here in the city of Cincinnati. But I would have to say that for Alicia Reese, who I've known for a long, long time, and I'll tell you, she calls me sometime five or six in the morning. But if she needs me, she calls me. And for me to be standing here amongst the county commissioner, that is comprised of three beautiful women, is something that I never thought I would see. And be honest, I didn't even know what the county commissioners did. But Alicia Reese did not use a microphone. She has used a megaphone. And now, I would say that people in our community have some clue about what the commission actually does, providing resources for everybody in arenas that you never even thought about. And so, she knows that when she says she was gonna come up with this bus, she said, "Dr. Melvin, you know what? I need you on the bus." And now, your girl just came up and gave me her card. She said, "I need to get you credentialed because we need you on the bus at least one day a month." My work is not yet done. The path that I have created, I'm gonna have to continue to follow. And those who are gonna come behind me in this program today for Black History Month are well-deserved and I am extremely proud to be amongst these Black leaders. And I thank you so much today.
Don't go anywhere. We're gonna take a picture. Vice President Dumas and Commissioner Dumas want to say a word and then we'll take a photo.
Yeah, I was gonna use the term trailblazer since you already used it. But no, you know, you are a trailblazer and you were in the community doing the work before others even thought to do the work. You know, you, you were in, leading, you've left a legacy of your work through other individuals that you impacted throughout your career and throughout your life. So, it's a real honor to, and I, I love that all the honorees know each other. I think that's, that's something to the, 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 the status of the honorees. And so, anyway, congratulations to you. It's, it's a real pleasure to honor you today.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you so much. I thank you for all the patients that you have seen. Have you added up the numbers, the hundreds and hundreds of patients that you've saved lives? And also, the Black and White Cancer Ball I've attended, and it's a great party. And I thank you for bringing more awareness to cancer. Appreciate it. Congratulations.
And we have to tell you, Jeff, where we have worked on, we're gonna have a cancer caucus to fight the cancer. And Jeff, I want to say, Dr. Melvin, we put another thing, we working you to death now. We putting you on the bus and we need you at the cancer caucus. All right, let's go take a picture. All right. Now, also want to say that they're gonna be bringing money this weekend. The Shriners Ball is in Blue Ash Embassy Suites. All the rooms are all booked up and people are coming from all over. So, thank y'all for bringing some tourism money back to us this weekend for the Shriners Ball. Our next honoree, Vice President Dumas.
All right. So, I jumped the gun earlier, but I'm pretty excited about recognizing Glenn McFarland. So, Glenn is one of these people that you, you think you know all of what she's done because, and it is so vast. The body of work is so vast. And then, you start looking to create a proclamation and you realize she's done even more. You are one of those people, Glenn, that just continues to give to this community. It is just an honor to have you here and I'm thrilled to recognize you for Black History Month. So, whereas the Hamilton County Commissioners recognize February is Black History Month. Whereas, Glenn McFarland received her master's degree from the University of Cincinnati in Healthcare Administration and her undergrad degree in nursing from Miami University, where she also became the first African American woman to receive the prestigious Ruth Ann Bussold Award, recognizing her outstanding achievements in the Department of Nursing. And whereas, Glenn McFarland previously served the community for many years as a registered nurse and in nursing administration for Christ Hospital, where she bridged the gap between county leaders and the hospital system to ensure fair access to healthcare. And whereas, Glenn began her career as a public health advocate for the uninsured, underinsured, and non-insured families. She is a leader in substance abuse and mental health care. And whereas, Glenn, as a public servant, has been a champion for social justice, civil rights, voting rights, and human rights. She serves with determination and grace. Whereas, in 1995, Glenn McFarland became the first African American woman elected as a trustee in Springfield Township, serving for 25 years until 2018. That's impressive, Glenn. That's impressive. Whereas, Glenn McFarland in 2019 became the first African American woman to be appointed to the Hamilton County Board of Elections, where she ensures that elections are open, fair, and transparent, and she continues to serve. Whereas, Glenn McFarland's service to Hamilton County extends to her work as the Chair of the Tax Levy Review Committee, and you're still serving there, where she helps evaluate our countywide tax levies, the former Chair of the Hamilton County Public Health Advisory Board, and the former Chair of the Cincinnati Conventions Facility Board. You see what I'm saying here? You see what I'm saying? So, whereas, Glenn McFarland was the first African American woman- So whereas Gwen McFarland was the first African-American woman elected as co-chair of the Hamilton County Democratic Party in 2018, and now serves as the Chair of the Democratic Party, where she has the unenviable task of organizing all of the elected officials throughout the county. Whereas Gwen McFarland is an exceptional leader who has given decades of service to Hamilton County and is known for her ability to bring people together to get things done. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners recognizes the dedication and commitment of Gwen McFarland and honors her for her years of service to the county. And be it further proclaimed that the Board does hereby proclaim February 20th, 2023, as Gwen L. McFarland Day in all of Hamilton County.
Well, first of all, I'm almost like Dr. Melvin. I'm like, okay, I'm so honored to do this, but I did not realize I would be among so many esteemed individuals like in this room today. And I'm also just really thanking the Hamilton County Commissioners for the work that you do in recognizing how important being a servant leader and being an elected official and being a person is for this county. So I'm just so excited. And when we talk about Black History Month, I see Black History Month not just as Black History Month, but I see it as American History Month. And that, to me, is so critical. And when I listen to all of my colleagues in this room, I was sitting there, and I just could not help but think, I truly believe, if not all of us, most of us, did not have a seat at the table. And once we saw that we didn't have a seat at the table, we brought our own folding chair and made a place at the table. So again, so I thank you, and I'm so honored and blessed to be among such prestigious individuals in this room. And those that couldn't be here today but are watching, I just want to thank you all so much, and I am so honored. Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to add to that, Gwen, your accomplishments. And I'm glad they talked about how you started out in health, but every segment has been about helping people, even in the role that you have now as the Chair of the Party. And you and I go way back
Yes, we do.
with all of the different opportunities that I've had to be at the city and the state, now at the county level. But one of the things that I enjoy the most is our fight for voting rights. And you were there. We've been there, and even with the Voter Bill of Rights. So again, I'm glad that you're having this honor today. And I liked what you said about what makes Black History special is not what people... what they actually achieved, but what they had to overcome because these places and what you're seeing today was not available. And it's our role to keep kicking the door down so the next generation doesn't have to say that these opportunities aren't available. So Gwen, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm glad that Vice President Dree House brought you forward and to be honored. And I'm glad we're able to talk about your hell's background and your background in Springfield Township for 25 years. And that was not easy when you were trailblazing. So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Congratulations again. And so how does it feel having an impact on all three of us up here, you know, leading the Democratic Party? So it's awesome.
Yeah.
It's awesome just to see you three and all the other men and women who are in positions now because of the trailblazing work that we all have been a part of. And you know, my mentor, when I first came from Cincinnati, because I did not graduate from Withrow. I did not graduate from U.
We bring you an honorary.
I did not graduate from any hospital... any, any school. But my graduation came when I met Marion Spencer when I first came to Cincinnati. And she took me under her wings and mentored me to be where I am today. So again, thank you. Congratulations.
All right, we'll take a picture. Okay, our next honoree, Vice President Dree House.
All right. Our next honoree is Judge Tyrone Yates. Go on up, Tyrone. I feel like everybody in the room... No, you can't talk yet, Tyrone. He's already looking for the microphone. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Tyrone knows everybody in this room. You are, you are a champion in this community. You're a legend in this community, honestly, Tyrone, probably because you've been doing it for so long. But anyway, I'm gonna read a little something about you, some nice words. So whereas Hamilton County Commissioners recognized February as Black History Month, whereas Judge Tyrone Yates is a Cincinnati native graduating... Are you kidding me? From Withrow High School.
What can I say? What can I say?
All right. Now, had I known that? In 1972, he has also graduated from the University of Cincinnati, where he served as student body president and earned the Jones Prize for Oratorical Excellence and a graduate of the University of Toledo College of Law. And whereas Judge Tyrone Yates began his public service career as an intern in President Jimmy Carter's administration in 1979. And whereas Judge Tyrone Yates in 1990 was first elected as a council member for the city of Cincinnati, serving until 1999 after two terms as Vice Mayor. And whereas Judge Tyrone Yates served three terms in the Ohio House of Representatives as the representative for the 33rd House District. From 2003 to 2010, Tyrone and I actually served together on the Finance Committee. While in office, he sat on the Finance and Appropriations Committee, Ways and Means, and other committees, and served as the Chair of the Criminal Justice Committee. He also served as the former treasurer and president of the Ohio Legislative Black Caucus and chairman of the Ohio Legislative Black Caucus Foundation. And whereas in 2010, Ohio Governor Ted Strickland appointed Judge Tyrone Yates to fill municipal court Judge Nadine Allen's unexpired term and secured an election victory in 2011 to retain that seat. He successfully won reelection in 2013 and 2019. Whereas Judge Tyrone Yates continues to serve our community outside of his public service role through his work on several nonprofit boards, including his past service to the Harriet Beecher Stowe House, Center for Holocaust and Humanity Education, the Cincinnati Symphony Orchestra, and as the current Chair of Sotani International and International AIDS Prevention Foundation, working in Kenya. Whereas Tyrone Yates is a prolific collector of John F. Kennedy memorabilia, and he has a unique collection he donated to the University of Mississippi, which houses the Tyrone Yates John F. Kennedy Collection, a tribute to the life of the 35th President. And whereas Judge Tyrone Yates is well-known for his acumen on all things, his generosity, and his disarming sense of humor. He is an inimitable public servant. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the county does recognize the dedication and commitment of Tyrone Yates to the residents of Hamilton County. And be it further proclaimed that we do proclaim February 21st, 2023, as Tyrone K. Yates Day in all of Hamilton County.
Thank you so much, Vice President Dree House and all of the commissioners who I know so well. If you'll permit me, just a couple of moments of personal privilege. Commissioner Dumas and I were contemporaries, probably not in age, but in experience, at the University of Cincinnati. And my congratulations to you. President Reese, I've known her all of her life and before. And her mother is now departed. But I used to call her father every morning, about 6:00 in the morning. And President Reese's mother came on the line and said, "Listen, if you're gonna call that much, why don't you just move in?" And I still rely upon Dr. Reese for his cogent advice every day as I grow older. And this closes the circle with me and the Dree House family, her brother Steve, who is serving in Iraq right now, in a dangerous part of the world. He and I are very close, and Denise and I have served together on so many bodies and organizations over the years. I'm so gratified about this award today. And I want to embrace everything that everyone else has said. Dr. Melvin and I, as you said, go back to the University of Cincinnati, where we were shepherding young people through. I'm so proud of the other honorees, in particular Chairman McFarland. I just want to say a word about government, public service, and politics for a moment. I have won a lot of contests, and I've lost a lot. I have been involved in lots of difficult issues and controversies. But my appreciation for you is so extant because the general public doesn't often realize how much of a commitment it takes for people to serve in public life and to participate in politics. And politics gets a bad rap. And yet, it is the only area in world life, as we see around the world, that helps to resolve conflicts and helps us move towards peace. And on this moment, I simply want to thank my family, all the way back through the ancestors, those that I know, those who are in the shadows, and those who I don't know because of our unique history. I also want to thank every person in this room as I came in and see so many familiar faces, black and white, that anything that I have done is a creation of what you have put into me. That I am here simply as a representative of the city of Cincinnati, the neighborhood of Wanted Hills, the county of Hamilton. And I hope that I can continue to make a difference in this community. Thank you so much.
One second. Gotta, real quick, before you get your picture. I just want to say to Judge Yates, as he talks about his unique background and knowing me before I got here and with his relationship with both my mother and my father, and his friendship and partnerships and understanding, I feel like I kind of followed him because he was Vice Mayor, then I became Vice Mayor. Then he went to the state. And what people don't know is I was not going to... I was, you know, my goal was never to be an elected official. And then he came to me after my mother passed, and I wasn't thinking about anything except losing my mother. And he said, "I want you... I'm getting ready to term out. I want you to run for state representative." And that's how I got back in it. So I went to the state after he went to the state. Then he came to county, and now I'm in the county. So I just want to thank you for that when you talk about recruiting and young talent and telling folks, you know, "Never give up." And I just want to thank you for that. Most people don't know that story, but that's the story, the reason I ended up running again and getting in it because I wasn't thinking about it anymore. And I want to thank you for that. So, and I will say that you come from the greatest high school in America. I mean, Withrow. What can I say? Commissioner Dumas?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. When I think of you, Judge Yates, I think of what a great human being. Just, I've known you for many years. And so what a legacy you have left here and continue to leave. And I was thinking, if I didn't know you and just following you and your profession as a judge, and if I had to come into a courtroom, you would be one of the few judges I would like to come in front of because...
Come on in, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Come on in. I'll treat you fairly.
I've always known you to be fair and ethical, and so it's just awesome. So congratulations.
All right. Our final honoree, Commissioner Dumas.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. We were told to find, and it wasn't hard, one or two people to recognize for Black History Month. And I have one. And the reason why I decided on one is because it was mentioned earlier, I think Gwen brought up, about Black History is not about African-Americans. It's about American history. And so we all, when we talk about February being Black History Month, that we all, black, white, yellow, brown, we need to be researching with that, the Black people that were influential and continue to be influential in our society. I was just thinking, I live my life on purpose and intentionally. So when I wore this outfit today, I thought about the African culture and the colors, the brightness, the beautiful Africa. I have not been there. I want to go there. The gold and diamonds that are there, the beautiful part. We need to remember the beautiful part about Africa. And I don't want us to forget that. I thought about the fact that if we all came here today, if it was not for African-American, there were no traffic lights. How would you get here? And then I thought about, once you got here, how would you get up here? The elevator. Okay? So these are really important. And the other thing, I was just reading about Sarah Boone. You may not have heard about her, but she invented what? The earning board. So we would look a mess, probably. Yeah. So I just wanted to talk about our past, you know, to bring us forward to where we are today. And I'm gonna read who my nominee is. If I can get through this, I'm very touched about this young lady. She is just awesome, and I'm sure all of you know her. And if you don't know her, you need to get to know her. Mrs. Dolores Lindsay. Whereas Dolores... Whereas Dolores Lindsay devoted more than 53 years addressing the healthcare needs of the uninsured and underinsured population in northern Hamilton County. Business Courier notes that she was the longest-serving healthcare center CEO in the country at the time of her retirement. And whereas her journey began in 1967 as a young mother of five residing in Lincoln Heights. At that time, there were no practicing physicians or dentists in the community. Her priority was to change that situation. What began in a four-room apartment in Lincoln Heights became Ohio's first federally qualified health and multi-site organization that served over 18,000 patients under her leadership. And although THCC's designated service area included 23 political jurisdictions encompassing 40... 46 census tracts, many patients resided outside of the service area. And whereas Ms. Lindsay has been called the dean of community health centers in Ohio and has been a mentor to hundreds of healthcare professionals working at local, state, and federal levels, her passion for serving diverse populations resulted in a model for health centers across the nation. And whereas she has served on the local, state, and national board, including boards of the Cincinnati Community Action Agency, the National Association of Community Health Centers, and the Ohio Association of Community Health Centers, the Center for Closing Health Gap, and others. I need some water, this is gonna be, this paragraph, listen to this. Whereas her many awards includes Cincinnati Business Courier Healthcare Hero Honoree, Cincinnati Inquirer Woman of the Year, Ohio Woman Making a Difference, YWCA Career Woman of Achievement, the Center for Closing the Health Gap Devoted Services Award for Providing Healthcare to the Uninsured, the National Association of Community Health Centers, Erin L. Brown Memorial Public Service Award, Fifth Third Bank Profiles in Courage Award, Urban League of Greater Cincinnati Glorifying the Lions Award, Healthcare Humanitarian Award, Healthcare Champion Inspire Award from the Cincinnati Health Collaborative Pro Seniors, Seniors Who Rock Award. And whereas Ms. Lindsay holds a master's degree in public administration from the University of Southern California at Los Angeles, a BS in Health Administration from the University of Cincinnati, and an honorary PhD in public service from Chatfield College. She is a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sigma Omega Chapter, advocates for youth, and Church of the Resurrection Catholic Church. And whereas, Ms. Lindsay is a lifelong resident of Hamilton County, Ohio, born in Cincinnati and educated in Cincinnati Public Schools and Catholic School System. She was married to Arthur W. Lindsay, who is deceased, for 56 years, and they have five children, Donna, Kenneth, Eric, Michael, and Lori, eight grandchildren, who are the joys of her life, two great-grandchildren, and five grandchildren. It says grand dogs? I didn't want to say that, but...
You have to, you have to, not when your kids have dogs, you have to acknowledge...
Okay, I thought maybe, I thought it was a typo, okay. Okay, all right, so...
So they're my grand dogs.
Therefore, be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners recognizes the dedication and the commitment of Mrs. Dolores Lindsay to the residents of Hamilton You are awesome. Everybody else is awesome too, but all your years of service, okay. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby proclaim February the 19th, 2023, as Mrs. Dolores Lindsay Day in all of Hamilton County.
When I hear, when I hear the proclamation, I think, and I stand here thinking, how did I have time to do all of that? But on behalf of the many people, that is, the legislators, the community, the boards, the staff, and certainly my family, who stayed and stuck with me as I went along this journey. And I think of the fact that we started with zero, and we ended up serving, I mean, started to serve just the village of Lincoln, or the city then of Lincoln Heights, and ended up serving 23 of Hamilton County's 44 political jurisdictions. It's one of the things I'm most proud of. Not only were we providing healthcare, but we provided opportunities for people to pay their rent because we provided, we made an economic impact, training of medical students, nursing students, and the like. When I step back and look at all of that, I, I can't say that that was a dream, or that was my career path. I mean, I was really just happy being a housewife, that's what I was known as back in those days, until my daughter, who is in this room with me, was in kindergarten and came home from PTA and recruited, were recruiting parents to get involved in the matter of the lack of healthcare in the, in the city of Lincoln Heights. When I look back on that and I look at her, and I'm grateful that I was able and that my husband was supportive of my doing that work. And so Commissioner Dreehouse and Alicia, I remember walking in the halls of Columbus, working with my colleagues, asking you to help us continue our work in the state. Although it didn't happen with you while you guys were there, the state of Ohio set the, the, either Les, I think it was Les Brown, who was, who was a congressman, introduced, not a congressman, I'm sorry, state legislator, introduced legislation that enabled the state to provide a special rate for the health centers who were providing to, through Medicaid, insurance for those who had, did not have insurance. So I always make sure that I let everybody know that it started in, in Ohio, that our legislation, legislators created that legislation, which led to what is known as federally qualified health centers in the country now, so. And certainly, Commissioner Dumas, when you were mayor of the city of Forest Park, you at least allowed us to come before you and talk to you and your council persons about the work we did in Hamilton County, because Forest Park is included in that one political jurisdiction. I do appreciate, from the bottom of my heart, being considered for this recognition, but I couldn't have done it without those people who worked with me, who believed in me, and who, even though they didn't believe me, they worked along anyway, they respected what we were trying to do, and that I appreciate. And finally, the members, the other persons being honored here today, as has been stated earlier, I know all of them, worked with them in one capacity or not, Gwen at one time worked at our health center with Dr. Aston and all of those people. So anyway, we go back and we've done, I know that we've done a phenomenal job, and so I couldn't have done it once again without people who believed, who even though, you know, believed in it, those that didn't still pushed us and supported us and respected what we were trying to do. So again, I thank you.
Mrs. Lindsay, thank you so much, and Commissioner Dumas, thanks for bringing Mrs. Lindsay forward to be honored today, and all the work that you have done that really can't fit on, none of the people we've honored can fit on the proclamation, we all were struggling. We wanted to have like, dot, 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 to be continued. But the work that you've done in health with, you actually built a health center so people could see it and touch it, and of course, more than one location now, but I thought that was major economic development. This is before we were talking about health development, you would hear about building of hospitals, but building of the health center was, was very huge. And I want to also acknowledge, I know with you is Councilwoman Linda Charles-Jeter came with you from the village of Lincoln Heights, who's here as well, so I want to thank her. And the only thing that I will add is, Jeff, write her name down again, I'm recruiting more people, we need her, we'll have something else for you to do to help, because you have such a wealth of knowledge, experience, and results, and we're looking, I know you don't want to do full-time, but if we can volunteer with us on something, we could use your help as we are fighting this issue of making sure people are healthy. And I want to say one more thing, this is before the American, the CARES Act, Affordable Care Act, this is before the Affordable Care Act, and this is when people weren't even being recognized, who did have insurance, underinsured, uninsured, and you were at the forefront as a pioneer, so thank you so much. Vice President Dreehouse?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lindsay, it's good to see you. We met back when I was in the legislature, as you say, and Commissioner Reese was, or President Reese now, was there as well, and you came for funding for that health center. And we sat on the Finance Committee, and I remember saying, again, I'm not familiar with what you're trying to accomplish, let me come out and take a look, and I did, and the health center and the work you were doing with all of the people in the community, providing hope to folks that really had serious medical issues, or not so serious medical issues, but just getting people in the habit of staying healthy, seeking out healthcare, it was transformational, what you were doing, and we did get that money eventually in the budget, but you were the champion for that, and doing, as President Reese said, doing something before everybody else was doing it. And so I applaud you, we celebrate you, I'm thankful that Commissioner Dumas brought you forward, because you really are a champion, especially in Lincoln Heights and in that area, for all the pioneering you did in the health field, so, thank you, congratulations.
All right, we'll take a picture.
the Prince Hall First Masonic District, who is here and gives out a thousand turkeys every year, turkey baskets, and Frank Bowen leads that effort. I want to acknowledge Frank Bowen, who does that, thank you so much. And I'd be remiss not to acknowledge my father, Dr. Stephen Reese Senior, who is a history maker of his own, but is here to support the honorees, thank you so much. What we're going to do is, we're gonna take a two-minute, a two-minute recess, the honorees, if you all can come up here, they're gonna take a picture, and then we'll come right back with the rest of our program, and you all are free, who don't want to stay, if you want to stay, we got some great stuff on the agenda. I mean, I'm telling you, you don't want to miss this episode, but no, if you, if you have to go, we understand, your own meters. So if the five could come up here, we'll take a picture, and we'll take a two-minute Okay, I'm calling the meeting back to order, and I would ask my colleagues if it's okay, can we do our comments at the end? That's okay? Okay, so we're gonna go to the agenda, we have, we're behind on the We have, we're behind on a public hearing. We have a public hearing regarding our sidewalk program, and the public hearing is pursuant to ORC Section 12122G32. No, that's not it. Is that it?
No.
No, I'm on the wrong one. That's the executive session. Public hearing is on our sidewalk program. I'm sorry. Come on up.
But this is actually the second hearing for the sidewalk program, Project 502301. It's our 2023 sidewalk program. The first hearing was on January 12th of '23. So this is just an opportunity for the public to come and make any comments regarding the proposed sidewalk changes that were set out.
Is anyone here to comment during the public hearing of the sidewalk program? Going once, going twice. I make a motion to close the hearing.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summaradumis?
Yes. Okay, I'll ask you to stay up because we're engineering, and introduce yourself, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm Lisa Dergar. I am the Budget Director for the Engineers' Office. I'm standing in for Eric Beck. We have one resolution before you today. The resolution is setting the viewing and hearing dates on the proposed vacation of unimproved fee right-of-way for a portion of Willow Road. This is located in Sims Township. The vacation request was submitted to the Board back in April of '22. The hearing, or I'm sorry, the viewing date is being set for March 8th of '23, and the hearing will be March 16th of '23 at 1:15 PM in this room. This resolution also directs the petitioner to prepare and submit a survey plat and directs the engineer to make a report in writing to the B.O.C.C. before the hearing date.
All right, Vice President Drehouse, any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Dumas, okay. I'll make a motion to approve item number one.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summaradumis?
Yes. Thank you. Now we'll go to the regular agenda, and I will ask the Administrator, we have some agenda items that we've moved up off the consent agenda to our regular agenda. And Mr. Ludo, you want to walk us through those items?
Certainly, I'm going to turn it over to Holly here, but just a quick summary, as the Board is aware. We have a lot of agenda items coming forward over the course of the next, and we have last year and into, into the beginning of this year relating to the Board's American Rescue Plan. Today, we have a couple of contracts that are related to our programming related to teen suicide prevention and also public health infrastructure. I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Administrator Chrisman to walk us through the details of each.
Thanks. Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Happy to be here today to talk through three grant agreements that are recommended for approval. The first, which is with Grantus Hope, just a little bit of background, the Board authorized up to $1.5 million in our American Rescue Plan Act funding for nonprofit organizations to expand existing teen suicide prevention programs. This is all, as you all know, in an effort to help combat the increase in mental health issues and suicide amongst our youth. So we did solicit for grant applications, and Grantus Hope is the first of five agreements that will be coming before the Board and recommended for approval. The others will be forthcoming once, sorry, once they're assigned by the grantee. So specifically for Grantus Hope, and Holly Schnapp is here with Grantus Hope if there's any specific questions, but I'll go over just a brief summary of their program. With this funding, Grantus Hope will serve schools in qualified census tracts to bring the HOPE Squad to those schools for grades seven through 12. According to their application, HOPE Squad is a peer-to-peer support and training program on the warning signs of suicide and when to reach out for help. According to their application, this program helps students identify classmates who may be struggling, helps them communicate effectively with those students, and connects them to help if need be. So far, the HOPE Squad has been implemented in 45 Hamilton County schools and trained 50,000 students. Anticipated outcomes of this funding will be to expand the program to 10 junior high and 10 high schools throughout Hamilton County. The funding is $221,700, and more than half of that will be for the HOPE Squad curriculum and license fees. I'm happy to answer any questions on that or direct them to HOPE, I'm sorry, Grantus Hope if there are any specifics.
Thank you for the presentation. This is very important. A lot of times, we approve things, but then you've got to go back and get the contract so people kind of forget. But $1.5 million for teen suicide prevention, this Board thought was very, very important, and it's even more important now. I do want to ask, and I don't, probably wasn't an issue as much as it is now, but we're having a lot of issues with adults and senior citizens that are committing suicide. So I don't know if we have some areas for that.
Not specifically for American Rescue Plan Act, but we can work with our Mental Health Recovery and Services Board to probably get some additional information to you on those programs.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Drehouse?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just really glad we're getting an update related to the American Rescue Plan funds. As President Reese said, we, we pass these priorities, and then you all are doing the work behind the scenes, and so now we get to see the culmination of that work, and it's, it's very exciting. And this group with the peer-to-peer, I think, is so important because we know that that's how teens, that's who they're listening to, and that's how their lives are impacted. So really excited about the expansion that's being made available here through the American Rescue Plan. So thank you for all that you do, and thank you for the update.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just compliment our Board for having the foresaw to allocate this money. We knew that this was an issue. We did not know necessarily that the rate would go up. The rate is going up with youth and with women, and as you were saying, with seniors. So I'm just really happy that we're able to get this going as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. That's item number two, right? I make a motion to approve item number two.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summaradumis?
Yes. Thank you very much. Item number three.
Thank you, thank you, President Reese. Items actually three and four are agreements for two organizations to receive grant funding, again, under the American Rescue Plan Act for COVID mitigation measures. The Board may recall, back in the third quarter, we did a presentation to you on $3 million in grants that we were recommending for healthcare providers. We've already awarded, the Board has awarded a couple of those already to UC Medical Center and Greater Cincinnati Behavioral Health. We have two more agreements that have been signed by grantees that are for your consideration today. The first is a resolution to enter into a grant agreement with First Step Home in the amount of $78,922. I think, as you all know, First Step Home is an addiction treatment center allowing children up to the age of 12 to live with their mothers while they're in treatment. So with these funds, First Step will provide and will increase air filtration, conduct HVAC improvements, and implement telehealth capabilities at their facilities. So we're really excited to partner with First Step on this program for these kind of one-time upgrades to their facilities. And I believe Rachel Lyon is here with First Step Home. Oh, hi, Rachel, if there's any specific questions for them.
Thank you. Rachel, I don't have a question, but would you like to say a word about this grant and what it would be able to do for you? Thank you for being here.
Thank you. It was quite a presentation earlier. It's very exciting. Yeah, First Step Home needs to basically upgrade further into the 21st century, and through this ARPA grant, the county will be supporting us being able to do more kinds of mental health and addiction recovery health efforts, particularly using telehealth. For example, we'll be able to work more with the significant others of women. We're trying to do more and more family work and work with older children who may be in foster homes or with their grandparents. And again, family therapy is, is a new, or our Family Unity Center is a new program that is just getting off the ground. This is very meaningful funding for us, and I guess I could say, we need it very much and hope you will support it.
Okay, thank you, Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I do want to just take a moment, I never pass up the opportunity, to recognize Margot Spence, who just retired from First Step Home. I think we honored her last year for Black History Month, and so her work lives on through the work that you're now doing and have been doing, to be fair, for many years. So thank you for that. Yeah, I'm really proud that we can partner with First Step and make sure that they've got the facilities they need to do the work that they're doing.
Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you, Madam President. No questions about First Step. I wanted to speak a little bit about Crossroads. The $25,000, was that their request? It's a little low.
That was their request.
That was, okay, very good. And secondly, Madam President, since Grantus Hope is here, and it's a new entity, I know we already passed it, if she may want to say a couple of words.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Commissioners. I really appreciate the time today. As Commissioner Drehouse mentioned, I think that what sets this program apart is that it really is about empowering the youth to be the eyes and ears for the schools. And, and the impact is undeniable, but the need is even greater. And so I commend all of you for taking the time and, and the effort to put money towards suicide prevention for youth. And I would just challenge you, if you have connections with some of these schools that you think would be great candidates, please reach out to us and we will, we will connect with those schools. I mean, Withrow High School has to be one of them, right?
Yes.
So thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Did you have anything else?
No.
On this? I just wanted to highlight, again, I know Mrs. Lindsay is still here, that we just honored. And one of the things she kept talking about is the air filtration. And so I'm glad she's here, as we are passing this, or we're getting ready to pass this for filtration, to let you know that we did put money aside. We understand that that is very important, the air quality, as we are still fighting the after effects of COVID. So I make a motion to pass item number three and four.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summaradumis?
Yes. Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is MSD. Items five and six?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Lauren DiGaresia on behalf of MSD. I also have with me today Jack Rennicamp, Matt Spadari, and Sarah Kramer, in case you have any questions. We have two items on the agenda today. The first, item number five, is for MSD's Little Miami Wastewater Treatment Plant Flow Meter Renewal Project. This legislation is to authorize and appropriate funding for the construction of this project. We are requesting $6,925,700 in construction phase funding. This project is located in the East End neighborhood of the city of Cincinnati at the Little Miami Treatment Plant, which is MSD's oldest and second-largest plant. It serves much of the east side of Hamilton County and treats approximately 27 million gallons of wastewater a day. The proposed construction will primarily include the replacement of existing flow meters in the plant's four-mile pump station, Little Miami Pump Station, and aeration process areas. The existing flow meters are aging and require replacement in order to provide accurate and reliable readings. These asset improvements will allow for more efficient operations and maintenance. The project will also, upon completion, facilitate the construction of future planned projects at the plant, allowing for more efficient and safer process shutdowns. This project is included in MSD's approved 2023 capital improvement program, and the amount requested today is the same amount indicated in the approved CIP. So with that, we recommend approval. You can take any questions at this.
Let's go to six as well, then we'll open it up for questions.
Sure. Item number six, this is a resolution to authorize the county administrator to sign applications to and agreements with the Ohio EPA and the Ohio Water Development Authority for financing through Ohio's Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, or WPCLF, which is the state's revolving fund that offers financial assistance for eligible wastewater infrastructure and restoration projects that improve water quality. MSD is recommending the submittal of applications for 12 MSD capital improvement projects for planning, design, and/or construction, all of which Ohio EPA has preliminarily determined to be eligible for low-interest loans through the program, since we nominated them just late last year. The 12 projects are located throughout the MSD service area. 10 are classified as treatment facility projects, one as a pump station project and one as a sewer project. The nominated WPCLF financing request totals approximately $102 million. The final loan amounts, which are awarded on a project-specific basis, will be determined as the project progresses and the applications are finalized. Request approval. You can take any questions.
Okay, so I'll open it up for item number five and six. Vice President Drehouse?
Thank you. I just want to note that we have talked in previous meetings about going for grants and loans at the state level and the federal level to increase the amount of revenue coming into the utility outside of just straight-out rates. And so I'm pleased to see this. Thank you for doing the work to secure this money, because it's, we know there's quite a bit of money out there, and the more you all can do to bring that to Hamilton County, the better. So I really am gratified that that's on the agenda. Thank you.
We agree.
Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you, Madam President. Just item five, you had indicated that the 6.9 was the amount that was indicated in the CIP originally, but this plan has, or this proposal has been already developed a couple of years ago. So what was the original cost? I know there was an increase on this cost. It wasn't originally 6.9.
That's correct. I'll ask either Matt Spadari or Sarah Kramer to come up and talk about why those costs have changed.
Yeah, I remember the numbers being a little different.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Matt Spadari with MSD. Frankly, I don't have that information today, but be willing to get it for you.
You came all the way up here to say that?
Be respectful.
Okay.
I can try and get in touch with someone, you know, back at the office, but try to get you that information. And if there's other, you know, questions or discussion on these items, buy me some time here.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Are you comfortable moving forward? Yeah, I'll move forward on that. Okay, all right. I make a motion to approve items five and six.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summaradumis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we go to our consent agenda and ask the Administrator Ludo to walk us through and identify the items that have financial impact.
Thank you, Madam President. So just walk through the consent agenda briefly here. Item number seven, we have a budget adjustment. These are grant adjustments in Common Pleas Court, specifically the drug court, for administrative grant costs. We have a grant adjustment, Mental Health and Recovery Services, moving some money into an administrative account there. A coroner's office grant where we're moving some funding from capital equipment into lab supplies. Item number eight are the bids, bid awards and contracts executed by the Purchasing Director, $450,000. I'll just give you, there's a couple that make up the bulk of that. There is telephone maintenance services over at JFS for $137,000. There is a contract over at 800 Broadway for the repair of the sub-basement at $54,000. They're doing a repair of the access control system over at Alms and Depke, the JFS building for $49,000. There's also a revenue contract on this particular report, $88,000, which is the sheriff providing security services, police services at Norwood City Schools. We have item number nine, which is a resolution authorizing the purchase of two Ford Escapes for the Hamilton County Clerk. Item number 10 is the resolution accepting purchase orders, setting up $738,000 with the purchase orders. These are really two purchase orders. Microsoft licenses over at Common Pleas Court for $138,000 and $600,000 to Meyer Food for food and clothing for children services families. Then we have pulled item number 11. Item number 12 is an agreement with Talbot House for work participation services necessary for individuals receiving Ohio Works First Assistance, and that is at $3.44 million. And we have juvenile court. There's a surety bond and oath of office for Judge Carrie Bloom and for Judge Stacy DeGraffan-Reed. We also have a surety bond and oath of office for Prosecutor Melissa Powers. We also have a surety bond and oath of office for Prosecutor Melissa Powers. And then we have item 15, which is a no objection to two liquor permits in Springfield Township and Anderson Township.
Thank you. Item number seven, I know we've all gotten, I guess, an email from Judge Sanders over at the Drug Court, and can you identify, does this resolve?
Yeah, that is the $37,000 item, the drug treatment, through the Drug Treatment and Recovery Court, that is the specific grant adjustment there. There's an agreement as well that I'm signing off on, but this is the grant, this is the appropriation action the board needs to take in order to transfer those funds.
Okay. And we'll be able to, once we pass this, you'll be able to move forward on it, because expeditiously she was concerned about timing?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'll open it up. Vice President Drehouse.
I have no questions.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple comments in general. As I look at our consent agenda items, I know when I first came here in 19, we were in a $40 million hole. Now we are struck, our budget is structurally balanced, and we have a reserve, which allows us, through this legislation that we passed, to repair buildings we were not able to repair, to repair the elevators, so all the things structurally that we were not able to do, we're able to do now. And so also, as I look down in JFS, we are continuing to take care of our babies and make sure that we provide the services that they all need to be healthy adults. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve items seven. Do I need to make a motion to pull item number 11?
No, it's been pulled.
It's been pulled already. Okay. So seven through 10, and then items 12 through 15.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Before we go into executive session, Vice President Drehouse, do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
I had a couple of things, but I, let me just focus on the one. I just got back from the National Association of County Officials Conference that was held in DC, and it represented Hamilton County there. It was a good conference. We heard a lot about the resources that are available at the federal level. There were presentations by Pete Buttigieg, by Janet Yellen, by President Biden, and I don't know if y'all know this, I didn't, Biden, President Biden used to serve at the county level.
Yeah.
It's like, oh, all right. So he was very intentional with the American Rescue Plan about pushing those dollars down, and at least in part, directly to counties so that we could do our work quickly to get that money out on the ground. And this commission did a very good job of that with the assistance of our administration, especially Jeff and Holly. But he talked about still some resources that are available, and so I've talked to Jeff a little bit about making sure that we are applying for those grants in the areas of economic development and transportation and health and mental health. And so it was really informative, and also I met with Dr. Raul Gupta, who was the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy Director, and it was a very small group that met with him, and he's interested in coming to Hamilton County to look at two things. One is the build-out of the Justice Center that we will be touring here in the near future, and then also some of the programming that's happening through the Quick Response Team and HCRK. So it was a really interesting conference, lots of great ideas being exchanged from people from all over the country, coming together with similar issues. We all have, we talked a lot about mental health and housing and all the things that we talk about in Hamilton County. Those are the issues going on all over the country. And so it was interesting to have those conversations. Lastly, the World Teen Mental Health Wellness Day that we've been talking about the last couple of weeks, the grants from BI3 for schools to participate in Teen Wellness Day. The grant application deadline is tomorrow. So I just wanted to put that out there one more time. These are mini-grants for high schools to do programming in their schools to reduce the stigma related to mental health, and also to promote the resources that are available to those teenagers in those schools that are struggling with mental health issues. So one more time, the grant application deadline is tomorrow, and go to BI3, and you can find that information. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Dumas. Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple things. Of course, we had the Hard Hat Tour down at the Black Music Walk of Fame. I know you'll probably say more about that. I also had a Zoom call with Kelly Kohler regarding the River Roots Festival that is being planned, hopefully, for October the 12th through the 15th. Alloy Development Corporation had their annual meeting. I attended that. Had a great meeting today with Michelle Young and Patty Collins as they look at a possible initiative for youth, and I was going to speak, and I thank Vice President Drehouse for going and representing Hamilton County at the NACO meeting. But also, whenever I meet with President Biden, the first thing he says when he sees me is, "A commissioner, come forward. A commissioner's job is harder than being a president." And I'm thinking, no, I don't think so. But he really, that's to say that he really respects, as you were saying, the commissioner's role and what we have to do. I also attended a Zoom meeting with the TLRC Tax Levy Review Committee as they discussed the zoo levy, and representatives from the zoo were there as they talk about the possibility of maybe a tax increase on their zoo levy. So I sat in just to see some of their concerns about why they think they may need an increase. And that's all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, and thank you for being at the Hard Hat Tour. We had, I think, about 60 people that were there, and the designers and the construction folks. And when you hear Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, one of the things I thought was great that we saw was it had diversity, and that's what we've been talking about, is not just African-Americans. We have, you know, non-African-Americans working on the project, Messer and JRA, and you just saw just a rainbow of folks, all included. And I said, wow, take this photo. This is what we're talking about. Everybody, all hands on, but one Hamilton County. And all of them were very proud of their work and were happy that people came down so they could see their work. And one of the guys said, "I usually only see you all when it's time for the ribbon cutting, and then we're in the back and everybody else," he said, "the suits show up, executives show up, and y'all show up, but nobody ever sees us." And they were just so happy that they saw, you know, the head of, you know, commissioners coming down there, and Jeff Aludo and Holly, and all, you know, they were just so proud to see that, you know, they're working on this. And 155 jobs have been created with this project, and the music festival has announced their lineup, and one of them is Snoop Dogg, and I hear it's moving fast, fast, fast. So we're at that same weekend, so that's people booking hotels and coming, and it's just going to be very, very exciting weekend. I was remiss, I did not get to also say I wanted us to keep in prayer. There's just so much tragedy going on throughout the country and the world right now, but Michigan State University, I want to send prayers out to the families and to Michigan State, and also our Cincinnati Police Department. It's just so many things, so many, so much death, and just want to send prayers out. Also, I did get a chance to attend and speak at the Alloy Development Awards Expo, and they did a phenomenal job. And one of the things that was said by Mr. Longo, which I think is what we've been saying, he's been saying that they have helped a lot of people, they've done a lot of great deals, a lot of economic development, but they didn't put a lot of time to let people know they did it, they were on to the next problem or the next deal, and that they were going to be more intentional, because sometimes you get encouragement from the story. And that's the same way with this board. What I indicated at my state of the county was, we're going to be more intentional in marketing and putting out there what we've done, how to access it, how to be a part of it, because our county has done some phenomenal work. What we've doing with the ARPA money and those kind of things, you know, what we're doing teen suicide, you know, people are talking about it, here we are, we just passed money for it, in a program that can get to the people, and we've done a lot of that. So we're going to continue to be more intentional and tell our story more and more and more so that we could connect more and more people to what we're doing. The mayor of Lachlan came up to me and said, "Thank you." He introduced himself and said, "Thank you," because you guys have not forgot about the villages, the small cities, and that meant so much to me. So again, we're going to be pushing one Hamilton County. I do want to say, I have asked the administrator, as we look at the Convention Hotel and District, and we hear a lot about the Convention Center outdoor expansion, but not as much about the hotel financing. So I asked that one of our staff meetings that we bring in, the developer that was selected, I think it's Portman, to come before our committee and to outline what it is, what it takes, what's the deadline, so that we have a real understanding of what the hotel, because I think the hotel is the reason it started all of this, and I don't want the hotel to get lost, where we're expanding a Convention Center and we end up with no hotel or a 200-room or 300-room hotel. Hotel has to be the first priority. We got the music festival coming, we lost 800 rooms that we normally have. Where are they going? I don't want them to go across the river. Where are they going? They're coming, and we don't have capacity. So the hotel has to be a top priority, and I've asked at one of our Tuesday meetings that we will have that. And then lastly, I announced earlier that the 21st will be Black Business Day, and we will have black businesses come in for Black History Month, and we're doing that through our Equity and Inclusion Office. I'm going to have a roundtable that I want to host as president, one of my initiatives. And then at 1:00, we have it open, and we're going to have a presentation. But I want them to be able to be direct, be able to talk, be able to talk directly and understand what some of the challenges are. And then we will have a Small Business Day in Expo for the first time with our first small business, Office of Small Business here in Hamilton County. So Mark and Holly are working on that. We'll have a date, I think we're looking at May, which is Small Business Month. So just want to put that on everyone's calendar, and we'll be at Lincoln Heights on the 28th of February, and it'll be at 6:30 PM. And I'm going to ask Jeff, I know we're going to go into executive session, but could someone, Councilwoman Linda Charles Deeters is here and is working with the mayor, Muffrey, if, I don't know if it's our clerk or Bridget, to get with her about whatever the arrangements are? She had asked me about it, whatever we need, screens, however we set up. So could someone get with her as we're leaving?
I'll be happy to get with her and make sure we have everything we need.
Okay, thank you. And Bridget also wanted to let us know that our courthouse will be lit up in honor of Black History Month, red, yellow, and green, so I wanted to let people know that. So we'll go into our executive session. I make a motion to go into executive, oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to ask a question about the color of the courthouse. How long will that go? I mean, is she doing it now and then?
I think it's to the end of the month.
So is it already up?
It's up.
It's already up?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
She just gave me a note, made sure I announced. It's, okay, Bridget said it's up.
It's up, I saw it last night.
Great, great, great.
Thank you.
Okay, I make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to ORC Section 121.22G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney for the public body concerning MSD.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.